Want to call the September 25th, 2025, O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order a real call. Katie?
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
She's excused.
Councilmember Cascala.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
Thank you, Katie. Folks, you have in front of you, what's the pleasure?
Motion approved, Kewen.
Most by Councilman Kewen, second by Cascala. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Imposed. Anything on the agenda that you folks want to talk about? Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Snowden, this might be a question for you, and I apologize for not letting you know ahead of time, but not getting the agendas until Monday, it's difficult to think about. On, where is it? On the committee and commission reports, the change order for Walden Spring and Crusher Drive, is that change order, does that, is, where is that money coming from on the change order? Is that part of the $60,000 that we, Vicki, sorry, is that part of the $60,000 that we approved, or is that already in it?
Wade?
Yes, Councilwoman, that is part of the council's approval for the landscaping. So, a portion of that will be contractor work, and then tap fees and purchasing of the monument, things like that, will come out of other purchases for those items.
So, we're saying a change order, though, so that brings the $60,000 that we already approved, it's now saying that we're approving a change order in addition to. So, that $60,000 is potentially more than 60?
I don't believe so. I don't have it in front of me. What was that change order, Boyer?
I'm trying to remember. Do you happen to remember, Mr. Snowden?
Irrigation.
It's for irrigation.
Irrigation.
But I, what I'm trying to understand is, since we approved the $60,000, is this, I think it was up to another $10,000 for irrigation, maybe?
Ms. Ragsdale?
Yes.
The, this will come out of that $60,000 that you have approved. This is not in addition to that $60,000.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing none. Workshop discussion items. Path program priorities discussion. Chris?
Thank you, Council, for having me tonight. Chris Clerks, capital improvements manager here for the city of O'Fallon. And today, we wanted to just give you a rundown and talk through some, what might be the priorities of the city moving forward here from 2025, and then kind of working into our new strategic plan for any bikeable, walkable priorities that you may want to entertain or have us look at. So, I have, just, just so you know, I have talked with both the parks committees, Parks Committee and the Public Works Advisory Commission, or Committee. So, you guys will be kind of the last stop for us to gather information, and then be able to kind of put it all together, and then evaluate the program. But what I wanted to do, first of all, is just kind of give a quick background. I know that I didn't have this attached to the agenda item, so this is the first time you're seeing it, but this is just a quick background of kind of where we started and where we're at now. In 2006, you can see where our population was, but we did a citizen survey, and it showed strong interest to improve our bike and pedestrian opportunities. So, when the city comprehensive plan was adopted back in 2008, it identified the fact we wanted to look into a walkable, bikeable plan as a goal to complete. In 2009, that walkable, bikeable plan was adopted by council after it was developed. So, in between 2009, 2015, there's a lot of things going on. We were, you know, we're always looking at for connectivity when it comes to new developments, whether it's commercial or residential, we're always looking for connectivity. That's our number one to go to. And so, a lot of that was going on. We were trying to get federal funding for multiple projects and things like that. In 2015, you can see that we had the interactive bike walk map launched, and that is the link to that. It does need to be updated, so please, if you look at it, there's going to be some things that need to be updated. It hasn't been updated in a little bit, but that's all kind of part of our goal, to come up with the new priorities, improve our, our program and our strategy for the, for the path and bike plans, and go from there. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. But you can see, as we all know, that our, our residents count has improved, and we're just trying to make sure that we can accomplish the goals that the, the city council wants to set forth, with the input also from the committees that support the council.
On your link, is that supposed to be ofallonmode.gov?
That was the link back in the day. I don't, I'm assuming that link still should work, I believe.
That link should work, or dot gov should work?
I have not tried this one for a while, I guess, since we transitioned it.
That link will not work.
Okay. Because we were, okay, yeah, so, I apologize, so it's probably-
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure, if somebody wants to see it, they're going to ofallonmode.gov/bikeablewalkablecommunity. Correct, Tony?
Let me find out if it's on the new site. If not, we'll get it there.
I thought it was when I checked. But it's, it's on the, if you go to the parks portion of it, Parks and Rec portion of it, it's in the walkable, bikeable community dropdown from there, and that's how I got to it. And we were done with transitioning at that time, so I guess I just missed that. My apologies. Oh, you're fine. So, so this is just kind of a list of some of the, the projects and improvements that we've had over the years, especially since I've been here. And, and we had some, plenty, plenty of things going on before that. But you can see that as far as the completed ones, we've had about seven of them completed. We've got eight in progress currently, and we've got five of them planned. So, that's a laundry list of them. I'm not going to walk through all of them, but there are some ones that I did want to kind of pull out, is just the fact that we've got the Darden Greenway Connector and the Sports Park Greenway projects. Both, the Darden Greenway Connector is in construction right now, down off of Technology. Our Sports Park Greenway is in design right now, and is planned to go into construction in the, in the next year. Those are exciting endeavors for the city, because we've been working on that for decades with the Great Rivers Greenway. We had a lot of momentum start once the lake from, on that Keven property that's down there off of Highway K, was turned over to St. Charles County. That really opened up the avenues for us to gain the momentum. And we're, we're moving really, really well with that, and really excited about those projects and, and coordinating. But you can also see that, you know, just starting an annual path maintenance program, it's in progress. We'll get to a little bit more of that here, too. But if there's any questions on any of these projects specifically, you can have me come back to this if you don't want to ask right now. But we can always come back to this slide if we need to. So, just, I just kind of wanted to give a very high-level understanding of the rough order of magnitude that we're dealing with. This is a very similar conversation to the, the conversation we have with streets, the street maintenance. We have a very large asset when it comes to our sidewalk path trail system. This is a rough order of magnitude, just to kind of show you where, where we think we're about at, where it comes to current inventory. But we do have 20, almost 22 miles of bike route. The multi-use path, we have 14 miles, which generally, a multi-use path is kind of defined as anything that's less than 10 foot. A shared use path is usually defined as anything greater than 10 foot, or 10 foot or greater. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. But we have about four, a little less than four and a half miles of shared use path. We have 6.6 of park path, and we have 2.292 miles of just sidewalk in the city that needs to be maintained. So, when you just put some rough order number, rough order magnitude numbers to that, you can see that it comes up with a really big number. And we have a, a lot of work ahead of us to make sure that we can, make sure that our infrastructure is staying up to, up to snuff. And in that 147 million number that you see, that does include all the curb ramps we have in our city, which is over 6,000. That's estimated at a value somewhere around 18 million, just to do all the curb ramps and to get them back to comply, up to a compliance that would be needed. So, just wanted to throw that out there as, as part of that number. So, that's the current inventory. But the staff has also done kind of a high-level map to try to just, to figure out if there's some future improvements we can start looking at in areas that may or may not be shown in some of our maps already, like the interactive bike map that I was talking about. It may or may not be shown on that. So, we're just kind of looking at, you know, what is the, what's the, where can we get to? Where, what does that look like if we do everything, and we get everything done, and everything's built? What does that really look like? And you can see that it adds quite a few miles to, to all of those items, but also a significant amount of cost. So, this is all just high-level. We're refining that map as we speak, you know, it's just an ongoing process. This is going to be part of that strategic planning that we're, you know, it was a big conversation in a strategic plan, and it's a, a portion of that that we want to keep moving forward with and, and improve in the system. So, when you put the current and the future together, you can see that we, we have a pretty big number of a value of an asset there. Comparing it to our streets, which we've told you guys many times, we have over 730 lane miles of streets. The way we did the, the sidewalk path and trail is we really just looked at straight miles. But, you know, the streets are valued at over 400 million. Just the, just the existing is 150 million roughly, that we need to start, you know, paying attention to a little bit more, or whatever we need to do to help our program improve. So, just showing the available SRF budget, that's strictly all this slide is for. We appreciate all the money you guys have always given us, and we try to stretch that as far as we can and do the most, most that we can with it, giving the residents the biggest bang for the buck. That's what we're always focused on. But you can see that the numbers aren't proportional to the asset that we have, just like it isn't in the streets. We know that's just always a difficult, difficult discussion, and we know that we always have to be considering, you know, where, where, where do we have the money? Do we have the money for what we need to do? And if not, how are we going to come up with that? So, you know, obviously, we're going to continue to always look for East West Gateway funding, county road board funding, and any other miscellaneous funding we can get, when it comes to that, just to help support any budgets that you guys would provide, which, again, we, we appreciate everything you've always done for us. So, I just wanted to kind of move on to a little bit of a cost of business, a cost of doing business conversation, because we have a lot of different avenues. This is a really large conversation, and I'm trying to kind of whittle it down and just kind of focus on a, on a priority for tonight, like, understand what the council's priorities might be for us as staff, to start looking at and evaluating. And just some of the cost of doing business that we all need to understand is that most things that we're going to do are going to require design. Not everything. There are some situations where we can just pluck and replace sections of sidewalk, curb ramps, things like that, that we already do on our annual concrete program, our annual asphalt program. We, we, if we touch the slabs all the way around a curb ramp and it's not compliant, we end up fixing the curb ramp. If there's a section of sidewalk, while we're doing, you know, a slab in that general area, we try to grab it if it's, if it's something that definitely needs to be addressed, and maybe Public Works can't get to it. So, we, we keep that coordination going all the time. The money only goes so far. So, it's just one of those things that, when we're looking at the, the larger scale projects, the, the Darden Greenways and the sports parks, and even just when, in 2017, we did a project that went up and down Highway K from Fizey Road all the way down to Technology, and filled in sections of path that weren't there, just trying to get the connectivity for that, that, that roadway corridor for us. And, you know, that was a couple million dollars just to do that job back in 2017. Obviously, things have gone up, so we're probably looking at something more than that if we would try to do that exact same project today. But, that's the thing, the, the design costs come in, and that all depends on the complexity of the project. We generally will have to be looking at potential for easement or right-of-way needs, especially if we're looking at 10-foot shared use paths. A lot of the right-of-ways may not be wide enough, so we would have to go after either easements or right-of-way purchases. That can get somewhat expensive, depending on where that is, and how much we actually need. And then you can see the laundry list of things we generally have to look at with construction, just to make sure that we're going to do this, do this once, and do it right. That's really what we, we're, that's always our goal, is to be able to do something and be able to move away from it for a little while, and then it turns into more of a maintenance thing over time. But you can see that list. I'm not going to go through all of them, but it's just, that's the list that, that it's not an all-encompassing. There is some stuff that may or may not be on this, but just wanted to give, give that to you guys. And just to, just to keep in mind that it's not as all, it's not as easy as it looks most of the time. I wish it was. It would make my life a lot easier, but it's not, unfortunately. So, I just wanted to make that kind of, kind of apparent. And then just talk about a recent path request that we have, which was about 1,750 lineal feet. And the connectivity area would be around the Fizey Road area and Bryan Road intersection, that we had estimated at just $450,000 for 1,700 feet. That's how fast that grows, because when you're looking at all that list that we looked at, and you put the cost to it, that's, that's what it takes for us to do a project of that size at this time. Again, rough order made to high-level stuff. But typically, you know, when you're looking at, if you have a sidewalk and you want to, say, put it 10, 10-foot wide there, it's, it's not usually the right thing to just widen out that piece of sidewalk. You need, usually need to take it out, because that sidewalk, for one, may be falling apart. It may be non-compliant. So, you don't want to tie into something that's non-compliant. That wouldn't make any sense. So, there's just a lot of things we have to look at, existing grades and conditions, all that kind of stuff. So, that's just a, an example we wanted to use, that the money grows pretty quick for the short lengths that we've been looking at. So, again, my, my biggest intent for tonight was to just kind of talk and really open this up to, to you guys, to talk to me about, you know, what, what is the city's priorities? We want to kind of set that priority goal, and start evaluating some of that, and start working on projects, and trying to find funding, and figuring out what we got to do. And this is just kind of a bullet point, you know, checkmark kind of a list that I came up with of, you know, is our priority just to focus on maintenance right now on the pass side? You know, we do have the 200,000 that we, we get through the approved budget over the last, I think, three or four years. You know, a couple of those first, the first couple of years, we put them towards a lot of curb ramps and sidewalk sections, because we hadn't really developed a program yet. We've gotten a little further into that, been able to develop some situations to where, like this year, we'll be doing preventative maintenance on a very long chunk of Highway K's asphalt paths. That would stretch from Technology Drive back to Waterford Crossing. A lot of asphalt path is in that area. We're going to try to do some preventative maintenance to keep the sections that are in still decent shape, at least in decent shape, for a little while longer. There's going to be sections where we're going to have to do some partial depth or full-depth repair, because the base has failed, and the path is just gone. May not be passable, may be passable. Yeah, I don't know all of it. But we do have some base repairs that we'll be doing, and there would be along Highway K, and then we are looking also at Fizey Road. We should be able to touch Fizey Road's asphalt path, and then Mexico Road at the same time. So, as far as the, the path is concerned, generally, when we redo or build a project, we build it in concrete for maintenance reasons. It is more difficult to build in asphalt and to get it compliant, because you have heavy rollers and all that kind of stuff on a very thin layer of asphalt usually. It can knock it out of compliance very quickly. If it has federal funds, it has to be compliant. There's no question about it. Or, you know, we just run into issues with the funding kind of thing. So, we, we, we will usually build them in concrete, and usually 10-foot wide if it's supposed to be a shared use path. Or, if we're doing a multi, multi-use path, a little less than 10-foot, we will still build that in concrete. We have, like those planned projects that I talked about, we do have expanded improvements, you know, to put 10-foot along maybe a section of Bryan that just has a current six or eight-foot asphalt path, or something like that. So, we're always looking at trying to, you know, enhance these little sections as best we can with, with what we have. So, again, I kind of open it up to, to conversation now, and just to see what, what we can get back from the council. I know we've had a lot of conversations in the past where Mexico Road has come up, or Highway N has come up, or, you know, the Greenways would come up, or, you know, that kind of stuff. So, just kind of looking for some, some more input and direction that staff can continue to evaluate, and then, you know, bring it back to you guys in a little bit more cleaner form, as kind of this smaller baby step of trying to figure out a very large conversation, because it goes a lot of different directions. So-
Well, I'll tell you what, my, I'll give you my three right now. My three is the maintenance of the existing paths, the resident sidewalk and path requests, and the curb and ramps, existing sidewalks maintenance. Those are mine.
Okay.
Snowden?
I was just going to ask Chris to go back to the list of what's been done, what's planned, and what's in the future, just so our council can see. You might already have something they're thinking about on your list.
Good point. Right there. So, you said maintenance, Mayor, resident requests, and then curb ramps, right? Okay.
Those are mine.
That's all that matters.
Mr. Kewen?
I agree with the Mayor. The one thing I don't see up there, and I know we've talked about it, and I know it's on the list, is the, the path on the south side of Mexico between K and Bryan. Unless that's called something else, but I know that's also on the list.
Yeah, we actually went after some federal funding for, for that section of Mexico. But that's, that's a section of Mexico we're going to try to do some preservation on, because I think there have been some repairs on, from Public Works that they were able to get done, and hopefully, we can kind of keep that in, in pretty decent shape until we can keep going after federal funds. We didn't get it this last year, but we'll continue to request for it.
Well, I wouldn't call it pretty decent shape, to be honest with you. They have done some repairs, and they've made it passable, but it's, it's actually in pretty poor shape, my-
There is a lot of sections that are in poor shape, and that's the kind of stuff where it, the preventive maintenance only goes so far, but it's already too far gone. That's where we may have to do some, if we have the money for it, we'll do some full-depth repairs in those areas, and then put a, a better surface over that specific area of the, of the repair. But it may look a little different, but in the end, we're trying to seal it to keep, you know, what we can together, as best we can. Yeah, and that would be the same thing for Fizey, too. I think Fizey's in a little bit better shape than what Mexico is. So-
And just, just remember, from basically Walgreens to governor's run, that new development's going to go in there, so they're going to be putting the new sidewalk in there, too. So-
Yeah, that, that's all part of it. Like, the other side of Mexico Road, we've got a couple of developments that we would, we'd be requesting when they get built, that they put the 10-foot shared use path in front of. We are looking at a sidewalk. We did get funding for this project from Canoust to Barrington, I think it is. We'd put a sidewalk on the north side of Mexico, because there's nothing there now, as part of that project. But we're getting the 10-foot built, hopefully, under the development side. So, we're always looking to try to leverage as best we can to, less we have to put through the SRIF, or any other funding sources.
Mr. Cascala?
Thank you, Chris. List looks awesome, especially looking at a lot of those up there that are either in progress or planned or Ward 3. My question is, for existing paths or sidewalks, is this also include, like, the crosswalks or island, what do they call, like, retreat islands or something, if, if you're crossing a road, that, the little safe landing area? Would that also be included in your, kind of what your priority list is?
That would be included in our, like, curb ramp inventory. Those cut-throughs should all be, the Refuge Islands is what you're talking about? Yeah, those should be included in our, in our ramp inventory. Now, our ramp inventory is a couple of years old, and I know we've probably accepted some developments and things like that, so we, that's what we got to keep up on. A lot of the newer ones should be on the inventory, or not the newer ones, when, the older ones would be on it. We might have to still capture some of the newer ones. But it should be on the curb ramp inventory. Yep. So, that would be part of it.
Amanda?
I had forgotten about that Fizey Road estimate, one that goes, it's on the north side of Fizey, right, by, goes from, can you remind me why it was so expensive? Was it because it was asphalt before, and you had to dig it up and replace with concrete?
Well, it's a, I think it's a concrete sidewalk right now. It might be a four-foot or a five-foot sidewalk or something. But, yeah, when we did our estimate, you know, just ballparking what we think it would take, you know, if you got, we've got what's called clearing and grubbing, to just kind of raise that area and, and get it ready for what it needs to be done for improvements. You got to remove all the existing stuff. There's probably some kind of excavation we have to consider, and, and at least have incorporated into our estimates. There's paved approaches for roadway or whatever, but there's usually some paved approaches we're dealing with. The integral curb, make sure that it's still good. Traffic control, just the general mobilization, you know, the restoration for your seating or sodding, whichever you decide to do. We have erosion control measures you have to put on no matter what. So, you'd have, like, silt fence, or gutter buddies, or some kind of erosion control system that would be needed. Then you have your rock and your concrete that would go back in for the 10-foot shared use path that we want to build, and like, any ramps that are associated to that with the truncated domes and all that. So, again, it's not as easy as it looks. I know, driving by, it looks easy, but when you really dive into it, you know, you, I just, we have to do our estimates the way we think they need to be done, and, and incur the cost to make sure that we don't underestimate, for the most part. I'm not saying this is an inflated number, but we have to make sure we've covered our basis, to make sure we're giving you guys the accurate numbers.
And that was to widen it and extend it?
It was just really to widen it. Well, it was, to, to build it as a 10-foot shared use path, it wasn't what, it's widening it that way. We weren't adding on to the sidewalk, because, like I said before, it's just not generally the best thing to do. For one, you have a joint. You're going to have some of it to where it's, you know, if you have a kick hazard in one little area, you'd still have to replace that one little area, or if something's starting to get out of compliance, you have to bring that back into compliance. So, there's generally not a good idea to try to just add on. So, yep.
Thank you. I know, Chris, you and I spoke beforehand. You know, and these paths are great. You know, they're all along our kind of major arteries, and like, you and I were talking before the meeting, I would love for us to see if we could start extending, like, through, between subdivisions and things, like St. Peters has. I mean, you can, you can catch a trail over at the Rexplex, and you can ride way out, all the way out towards Spencer and Jungerman, and you are not on the main arteries. You are riding behind people's houses and nice shaded trails. I don't know if that's a possibility for O'Fallon, the way our subdivisions are built, but I would love to get an aerial view and see if there's any way of doing some type of more bikeable, walkable paths that are through the subdivisions, so, down the road. I know there's no funding for that now.
Yeah, yeah, that's something, I, I know our development reviewers, and commercial residential review, where we sit down and talk as a group, we're always looking for connectivity and trying to make sure that we're looking at those opportunities. And, like you said, sometimes it, it doesn't work out, and I don't know the, the ins and the outs of, like, if it's built for the HOA, and then all of a sudden, you turn it into, like, public access and all that. I don't know the technicalities to all of that. But I do know that we're always looking for connectivity with the developments in any way, shape, or form that we can get, just because it helps us in the long run get stuff built. And then, obviously, we just have to start maintaining as long as it's city responsibility. I think a lot of them have been turned over just to the HOAs to maintain, and that, I think that's just kind of another layer that we have to work through.
Yeah, because when you're riding it, even over in St. Peters, there's some, there's some rough spots, because it's asphalt and stuff. But, you know, the, the Highway K one is, is wonderful. It looks great and everything, but as a bicyclist myself, I won't ride it.
Yeah, the bike loop?
You know, it's, it's a little scary. A lot of cut-ins for people going into parking lots and things. And, you know, I, I use Mexico Road and things like that often. But still, if we could be off the major roads and be back riding on some trails, would be really wonderful.
Yeah, just, just to add on to what you're saying, it made me think about the, the sports park greenway connection. We're actually going to have connectivity to the bike loop. So, if someone is wanting to use the bike loop, and gets down to that certain area of, right before the bridge, if you're going to the south, you'll be able to spin off and get down onto the greenway. And once we're connected with that, you could go for miles. Yep. That'll, that'll be a nice connection.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions on the priorities, what they would like to see?
Oops. So, just, for instance, having talked to Parks and Public Works Advisory, very similar conversations. I've got some stuff I just got from, I think, the, some, some other members of the Parks Committee just today, but, you know, general maintenance seemed like it was more common. I, just high-level, I think the curb ramps were a little more common, and the resident sidewalk path requests came in a few times. So, you know, again, we're, we're always going to be looking for connectivity and funding opportunities, so that's always in our purview, whether it's the first priority or not. But, you know, what we're kind of trying to hone into is there a general area, or something specific that we need to really look into a little further to, you know, help out, or to, to accomplish what, you know, the city council wants to now. Because we had priorities set years ago that we were accomplishing off of, based off the council's direction then. So, we want to make sure we're, we're trying to accommodate what your guys' vision is, as best we can with these next years now.
Speak now, or for over forever, hold thy peace. Speak now or forever, hold thy peace. Because when it comes to budget time, you guys have the choice of what you want to go. So he's going to go off of what he hears tonight for budget-wise. Brian?
I like this interactive map. This is pretty cool.
Okay, so you found it. That's good. I was hoping that somebody did.
Yeah, I pulled it up, and I'm like, oh, I wonder if their paths are. It's all good.
Yeah.
Just trying to get on, so going down Highway K from one end to the other, you have to cross over to get the paths. Is there a way to not do that? And then outside the box, is there a way to do like a ramp if we're, so you walk a ramp over the K?
Yeah, a bridge over K. That has been discussed in the past, and honestly, it'll be very expensive to do something like that, but you just made me think of something else. With the Sports Park Connector, we will be going under Highway K. So the barrier of Highway K will be addressed in that immediate area. Now, just getting down to it or connected to that is what we need to kind of look at as, you know, kind of the bigger picture. But we are going to have that barrier corrected, and we will be able to get underneath. And then should anything happen, which Gray Rivers Greenway, Cotville, O'Fallon, we've had conversations, and everybody wants to keep working to the east because we're working west, and we'll be connected all the way to 64 by the time we're done with the two projects through Barrett Haven, Bluebird, and all that. But going east, you know, we all want to get that connectivity, too, over to Highway N, which would marry into the Highway N shared use path project that we currently got county road board funding to start design on, which is really exciting that we finally got funding for that. Now, we just got to try to get federal funding. But once we get to there and you hit, you know, that section, if you go east, you go to Cotville through Legacy. I mean, you're going all the way up to, I think, 70, and then they got a little gap they still got to get, but eventually, we'll be able to get the Lake 370, you know, so the, and once you get, if you go the other direction, you go towards Bush Wildlife, we hope in the future, we can get some kind of connectivity to Bush Wildlife, and you could go as far as you want on to the Katy Trail ultimately. And that's kind of the goal of everything with that. The darned Greenway is that big a piece to the region connectivity. Yeah, it's really exciting. So.
That is it, yeah.
Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, on the east side of Highway K, there are two spots that I can think of that don't have connectivity. One is the cemetery across from Lowe's. The other one, I think, is north of Fallon Parkway and that car wash. Can you speak to why those aren't connected or what the level of effort would have to be to make that connection?
Yeah, so I think the first one you're referring to would be from Mexico to Fiesi, basically. And we have submitted on federal applications a couple of times with that. It gets pretty expensive on that one. There's some walls involved by that cemetery because we were on that side. It was a while back. I don't remember all the specifics, but we have tried to get that one. I think that was when the TAP funding was a little bit lesser than what it is right now, and the focus for east-west gateway has shifted a little bit now. So I'm hoping that we can reengage. Cost is one big thing. It was in our purview, it was kind of a priority because we were trying to finish up Highway K at the time, but we just, the funding just wasn't supporting it anymore. And the one on, you said O'Fallon Road or Fallon Road?
On the east side of K, north of Fallon Parkway, there's a car wash, and then there's a big drop-off.
Yeah.
Sort of the same thing, only a drop-off instead of a hill, I think.
Yeah, so our priority back in the day would have been to at least get the connectivity along Highway K as best we could, and that's what that project was that I referenced before, just to get the segments. So we did have connectivity from Fiesi all the way to Technology in a roundabout way, going through Sports Park, but there was connectivity. And then that piece just fell right outside of, well, it was on the other side of the road. We were focused on trying to stay on the west side of K and focus on getting one side somehow connected instead of bouncing back and forth. And that was where some of the challenges came in, trying to figure out where the best place is across, Waterford Crossing is a crossing area. Highway N and K is now a crossing area that we built with that project. So again, it came down to funding.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. Yeah.
Amanda.
So looking at this, I think my top three would be maintenance to the existing paths and sidewalks, ramps, and bike infrastructure. I mean, I'm a believer in take care of what you have already have before you start building new stuff, so that's mine. And you know, if you want to throw in that Fiesi Road extension, I wouldn't be mad at you, but yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor. I'll chime in on this. My top three would be the maintenance on the existing paths, any kind of deal that's unsafe for bike riders or joggers, don't want anybody to trip and hurt their toe, and the curb ramps and existing sidewalks maintenance.
Okay.
And then any other maintenance that just, you know, small potholes on the sidewalk somewhere, or just where somebody can run or ride a bike without having to veer off from it or crash.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Linda.
Thank you. As been said, maintenance definitely, I'm very big into let's maintain what we have before we build new, but I'm kind of surprised that no one has said resident sidewalk path requests. I just feel like our residents have to come first, and they notice what's outside their door, and I think that we really need to be making sure that we have resident sidewalks in top shape.
Okay, thank you very much.
That was number two on mine.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the mayor on that one.
I did write that down. I had to look back.
Well, now I'm very sorry.
Yeah.
I was sleeping there.
Yeah, and all these are, it's exactly what I'm looking for. And obviously, you know, staff's going to look at and evaluate everything that's out there for us, and we got to get a little bit creative and try to figure out some things that we, you know, maybe submit some applications that are a little different than we have in the past and see where they go. You know, we can definitely, we'll start looking at all that. Anything is on the table for us, as long as we can get money, we're going to go after it, so.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Michael? Got a video?
I do.
Oh, is that supposed to do this?
Not necessarily, no. So earlier this week, our communications department debuted a video about new technology that the police department is utilizing that was created from used tax funds. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to show that video with your permission, Mr. Mayor.
Go for it.
All right, folks in back, would you please play the video?
There are eyes in the sky. Anytime, anyplace, our O'Fallon Police Drone Force is there to serve. Thanks to genius design, craftsmanship by O'Fallon Police and O'Fallon Fleet Division, OPD has a one-of-a-kind drone truck that exponentially cuts response time and sets our police flying high above the rest of the nation in using drones to keep us safe.
At the O'Fallon Police Department, we are consistently trying to look how we can utilize and leverage technology to make our job not only easier, but give us the ability to do more and to do it better.
Drones really, and the drone truck represents the ability to just expand our response capabilities exponentially, because it's a resource that many departments don't have, and if they do have it, it's not usually available day-to-day, moment-to-moment.
So back in 2020, really drone technology was just really becoming more and more prevalent. We looked at that, and instead of seeing something that could be a problem we'll be dealing with in the future, we wanted also to see like, how can we use that?
The department quickly put drones to work for the community, assisting in search and rescue, suspect monitoring and pursuit, and strategical awareness at emergencies and events such as Heritage and Freedom Fest.
So if we had an incident occur, we have a situation where, you know, someone with dementia wanders off, we can clear those huge areas in minutes where it used to take hours for us to do it on foot, and it's just given us so much more capability for tasks like that. We also use it for, we have someone burglarize a house, and they get out and they're running from us. Same thing, we get that drone up. Once that drone finds that person, like they're not getting away from us. Right now, we've expanded our program to where we have 10 drone pilots, 10 drones that have thermal capabilities, gives you the ability to see heat, so light doesn't matter. I put it up pitch black, and it's going to see something warm, and that's going to glow like a flashlight's on it. So when I want to find a person, even in the daytime, I use a thermal camera. So the next step that we looked at was, we want a vehicle in our vehicle fleet made for this purpose, and we found out quickly that that doesn't exist. We actually designed this entirely ourselves because you couldn't just go buy one. We looked all over the country. We found manufacturers for all the different things that we wanted, and then we bought it here, we had our fleet put it together, and it's entirely, it's a one-of-a-kind thing. You won't find this anywhere else because they don't make them. It's entirely a custom-built vehicle.
This custom truck has drones assembled and ready to go at a moment's notice, and a large pull-out screen for the pilots and nearby officers to have a better picture of the scene. A whiteboard for command and strategical analysis, multiple drones, even ones designed to fly inside buildings, and enough batteries to power these capable machines all day and night if needed. When not in use, power can be shut off with a switch or conversely be plugged in like an RV to keep overnight.
So the truck is already on the road. It's with an officer, so I'm a patrol officer. I'm driving this truck. Yes, it goes to other calls for service. It responds to traffic accidents. It makes traffic stops. We can make arrests. We still do all of the same jobs that a patrol officer does in the city of O'Fallon, but it's out there in case we get the call that unfortunately, there's someone having a crisis and they've run away from home and they're in a state that we need to find them now. The truck's already loaded up, so it takes response time from 20, 30 minutes to five to 10 minutes at most, because we can get there anywhere in the city, and we actually help other agencies around the area as well when they request us, whether that's looking for a suspect, we can catch someone because we're getting there quicker. We're doing proactive stuff. So when we were getting hit by people breaking into cars overnight and that sort of thing, we stationed the truck places where there would be that sort of activity so that we could be proactively flying the drone to look for people that might be in those neighborhoods.
So with the drone truck, we can keep a drone up indefinitely. There will always be a charged battery ready for it when it comes back down. The laws are constantly changing, the FAA is constantly changing rules, and what we might do next year, who knows? We'll look at what we can get, what we need to get done, how we can make it work for us, and then we will design something new. Technology changes, we'll keep changing with it. You're just excited I get to go to work and fly.
We're proud to serve this community. Being able to utilize this every day is, one, I would say we're very blessed and fortunate that we have that ability, and two, it's exciting because we are cutting edge. So when you talk about the O'Fallon Police Department, you talk about all the things we're doing, the capability that we have to respond to things in motion or work with other agencies, it should also give the residents pride in that we are forefront. So we are working to be a leader, not only regionally, but I would say working to be a national leader in some of the stuff that we're doing. And drones are part of that initiative. We already know that O'Fallon is one of the best places to live in the nation, and every initiative that we take with technology such as drones just helps to increase and showcase why O'Fallon is one of the best places to live.
Chief, you got all the cool toys.
Yes, sir. We're trying to outfit the Justice Center with wheels so we can drive that around, too.
All right, any other items of consideration? Saying none, I'd like to have a motion go to closed session. 610-0211, legal action, cause of action, litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representative and its attorneys. 610-0212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. And 610-02112, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, and sealed proposals and related documents, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. So move Kuhn.
Second, Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second by Councilman Wexler. Roll call, Katie.
Councilmember Cuskella?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhn?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson? Sorry.
She's excused.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Wexler?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
All right, we'll be up in the community room at 6:25. When a call is September 25, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order, roll call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Wexler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
She's excused.
Councilmember Cuskella?
Present.
Councilmember Kuhn?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
If anyone would please stand for the invocation by Brandon Keisley, an associate pastor for First Baptist Church of O'Fallon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray together. Father, I thank you so much for tonight that we can gather together in this place to do the business of this city, and just thankful for each citizen and representative here on the council, and just thankful for their leadership. And I just pray, Father, for wisdom tonight as we deliberate and make decisions to further make this city a great place for people to live and work. We lift up you tonight, and we honor you in Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Roth.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Imposed, motion passes. First, on the president's officers' report, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my following appointments for Jim David from Ward 1, Sheldon Hartsfield from Ward 4, Judy Northcutt from Ward 5, and Lori Stock from Ward 5 to serve as members on the Veterans Commission with terms to expire September of 2027. So move Kuhn.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second by Councilman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Imposed, motion passes. Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Councilmember Kuhn to serve as city council liaison to the O'Fallon Convention and Visitors Bureau. So move Wexler.
Second, and Taylor.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Imposed, motion passes. Next is citizens' comments. This is a reminder, you have three minutes. Mr. Dinoff.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Arne C. AC Dinoff, city public advocate, running for city council in April of 2026. First issue I'd like to talk about is Bill Number 7789 under New Business. When it comes to our paths, whether it's maintenance or design, I don't think that we need to be hiring outside consultants or outside engineers when we have at least a dozen city engineers that are on staff that we pay in excess of $80,000 to well over $100,000, plus benefits, plus pension. So I'd like to see a lot of these be done in-house, which brings me to Resolution A on the agenda, providing for the design through CGG engineers. Again, it does not take a rocket scientist to draw a simple 10-foot multi-use path that's either blacktop or concrete in terms of design and to maintain. And so I think we can, we have enough expertise in our current city professionals that are on staff to do it in-house, saving taxpayers a dramatic savings on an annual basis. When it comes to Resolution C, which is their city strategic plan, I don't know if you had a retreat on the taxpayers' dime again this August. I wasn't invited, so I evidently wasn't there to know about any retreats paid for on the taxpayers' dime. But the first, on page one, talks about fees for citizens to make simple utility payments for sewer trash or water and other issues. I don't think that the city should be in the business of charging convenience fees if somebody wants to utilize credit. I think that it should be left alone, and I don't think that we should be utilizing staff time to try to run that down. On your agenda are two leases, F and G, for cell phone towers. It takes respectively through 2057 and 2056, according to how it's on the agenda for F and G. It will have an annual increase of 3%. I'd like to see staff sharpen the pencils a little bit more, go back to the negotiating table and get 4%, because I think that is what we deserve, and I'd like to see that money go to community improvements and community issues to improve our community. These are six five-year increment extensions of the contract for these cell phones, and the sign-on bonus for the second agreement or first agreement, First Amendment and Second Amendment respectively, is $15,000. I think we deserve $25,000 for assigning business. This is big business.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
They're charging the people who locate cell phone towers on their tower a lot of money, and I think we should be part of the equation and part of the pie. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the speaker that just spoke, I wish he would look at, watch the workshop and see what it does take to put, you know, it's just not easy just putting, tearing out concrete and putting new concrete in or asphalt in. So I would suggest him to look at the workshop and see what it all entails for the engineers and everything else. Our next speaker is Michael McMahon.
Hi there. Michael McMahon with Hush Blackwell. We are counsel to the developer of the Rosalitas Cantina going in on Mexico Road, and we are requesting an amendment to the cooperation agreement, and so that's Bill 7790 I'm speaking in support of. We are requesting a extension on the deadline for substantial completion from October of this year to July of next year. And I've, on the screen you can see, I just wanted to show the progress that's been made to date. We've got the exterior of the Rosalitas going in, significant interior work that's ongoing. Additionally, the harbor freight, the retail tenant, is up and running and is currently generating sales tax for the city. So I just want to make myself available for questions if anyone has them.
Thank you, sir. You have no other citizens' comment? Brings us to Ward Report. To Ward 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take a second to thank the city and county staff, as well as the Corps of Engineers, the Conservation, Fish and Wildlife, the Department of Natural Resources, and most of all, the residents that came out on Tuesday to the informational open house for the Lake St. Louis extension. A lot of good questions were asked, a lot of information was provided by both the city and county staff regarding the project, and really just want to express my gratitude to the residents that came out, were constructive, had good feedback, asked good questions. This, like everything with being up here and serving the citizens on council, is going to have some people that are for this project and against this project, and it's a decision that is hard to make for all of us, that we know that we're going to have half the people not happy with the decision that we made. But we have to vote with our hearts and think of what we think is best for the city going forward, and I appreciate those residents taking the time to come and tell us how they feel.
Thank you, sir. Ward 4, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. This weekend is homecoming weekend at Fort Zuma West High. They're having a homecoming parade on Saturday at 10:00 a.m., so I encourage everyone to come on out and enjoy the celebrations. I also wanted to take a moment to commend our Fire Protection District and Police Department for putting together the drunk-driving crash live simulation at the high school for the students ahead of these festivities. It was an impactful demonstration, an important reminder, especially for our teens, that one decision can change your lives forever. So thanks for putting that together for them. And lastly, last week, Councilmember Boyer and I attended, and some other staff and Mayor attended the Missouri Municipal League's Annual Conference, and I thought it was incredible learning experience. I learned about public works contracts and bidding processes and even how to be more effective in our roles as council members and so much more. So I just wanted to, you know, strongly encourage my other council members to consider attending next year's conference. I thought, you know, that we are the great, yes, we are the great city of O'Fallon, but I think we can always strive to be, always strive to be better, strive to be the greatest, you know? And I think that requires a commitment to continued learning and training and growth. So yeah, I just hope more take part in these opportunities because when we grow as council members, our city grows with us. So thank you.
Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to, yesterday we had the annual Employee Appreciation Day for those at City Hall, and I just want to extend my appreciation to the folks here at City Hall. The reason we're a great city in part is because you all do your job so well. A lot of you have been here for a very long time. I've seen you up here for a very long time, and there's a reason for that because you're good at what you do. The other reason, of course, is our fantastic police department. You know, I joke with people, we live in a very large Mayberry, and what I mean by that is our crime is very, very low, and obviously that is because we have an outstanding police department, and I'm very happy about that. As to the gentleman who starts talking about engineering again, as an engineer, I'm flattered that you think we can all do every possible job that there is, but I assure you the 12 engineers that we have on staff here do have full-time positions because they have responsibilities they have to pertain to each and every year. And quite frankly, suggesting that engineering plans, even for sidewalks or something that a monkey could do, or what did he say, not a rocket scientist, well, give it a try. I'd love to see that. Give it a try, turn it in, see if it passes muster. My guess, probably won't. You need more than a crayon and a piece of paper, buddy. That's all I have. Thanks.
Ward 5.
Thank you, Mayor. Ward 5 is going to be busy doing some HOAs. We have one this Saturday morning, Falcon Crest, here at the multipurpose room at 10:00 a.m. We have Villas of Dames on Monday evening at 6:00 here at City Hall, and on Tuesday we have Winter Haven also at 6:00 in the multipurpose room. So lots of HOAs going on. It's that time of year, so hope to see everybody come out. Thank you.
Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was it last Friday we attended the POW MIA ceremony? There were a couple of other council members that were there, so I just want to commend everybody that was in attendance. It was a fantastic ceremony, and I told the band director of St. Dominic that I would give them a shout-out because the people, the students that were there playing, they were volunteered, you know, what high school kid wants to volunteer their Friday night to come and play music for us? But huge shout-out to St. Dominic for being there, and that's it. Thank you.
And just if you didn't, I believe if you had a chance to listen to the guest speaker, the gentleman was in, was a POW for six years.
He was phenomenal, very soft-spoken, but he was a phenomenal speaker, and I had the chance to talk to him beforehand. He was great.
Yep. Ward 1.
Nothing from me this week.
Mr. Roth.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. I'd like to touch on what Councilman Ragsdale said about the POW MIA. It was a great show. The city did another fine job. The VVA did. Everybody involved did a great job down there, so. And then I want to thank all the citizens from Chadwick subdivision. Last Tuesday, they came out and discussed some of their concerns with the property at Canoust and Mexico Road. Was a very good turnout. It was a lot of productivity in it, and the future of that lot will be coming up soon again. And then the parks personnel, every day, me and my buddy Lego, we go for a walk in a different park every day. And the ones down in Dame's Park, them guys are just awesome. They cleaned up the veterans, Vietnam Veterans Memorial down there, got everything nice and clean. I'd kind of like to see cleaner mulch down there, but take what we can get. And I stopped down there and seen the playground they're assembling. They're doing a great job. They're very detailed, a great group of guys down there. And I think that's, oh, we got, on October 2nd, we got Bramlett HOA coming up. If anybody's in that subdivision, hopefully we'll see you Tuesday on that one. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boyer, Ward 2.
We're, looks like we're actually done with summer. I guess second summer's done. We're actually into actual fall, so we've got a lot of walkable areas within O'Fallon, a lot of great parks. Now would be the time to go out. There's a lot of football going on, too. Go out and support our local high schools. It's a lot of things going on. Also, the Walk to Remember Alzheimer's, there's this weekend at the St. Charles Community College. You can go out and participate there and help find a cure. Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Brings the administrative report. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries this month. Finance Accounting Manager Jenny Morris and Project Manager Eric Kovac, sorry, has been with O'Fallon, have been with O'Fallon for five years. Street Maintenance Crew Leader Richard Sieve, Project Manager TJ Kelly, and Police Officer Andy Lubieski have all served our city for the last 25 years. And last but certainly not least, Police Captain Jeff Lang has been a great teammate for the last 30 years. So I'd like to thank all six of these individuals for being such an integral part of Team O'Fallon for all of these years. The Patriot Blood Drive, which was held on Friday, September 12th, has surpassed its goal, with employees and residents donating blood that will help improve the lives of 69 local patients. Our annual Support Our Troops Supply Drive, held with Hero's Care, was also a huge success, resulting in 57 care packages being sent to Missouri service members overseas. Volunteer Services extends a heartfelt thank you to everyone whose generosity made those incredible achievements possible. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate Amy Harrelson, who is an HR Generalist, on completing her certification in HR Analytics for the Public Sector through the Public Sector Human Resources Association. This certification demonstrates her dedication to continuous learning and her commitment to using data-driven strategies to strengthen our HR practices. So congratulations to Amy on that distinction. Lastly, I'd like to wish a happy upcoming birthday to Councilmember Cuskella and Mayor Hennessy. That's all I have tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to the old business, brings the Bill 7782. Motion for second reading by title only.
So move Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed. Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7782, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Machine &amp; Ink to allow a tattoo and body piercing establishment in a C-2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 207 O'Fallon Plaza within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Most final passage? Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Bill 7782 passed and becomes ordinance number?
7243.
7243. Thank you, Bess. Brings the Bill 7783. Motion for second reading by title only.
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed. Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7783, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the rezoning of a certain tract of land located at the corner of T.R. Hughes Boulevard and East Terra Lane, south of Public Works Drive, owned by Five Star Investments, from L-1 Light Industrial District to C-2 General Business District.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7783 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7244.
7244. Thank you, Bess. Brings this to Bill 7784. Motion for second reading?
Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed. Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7784, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Five Star Investments to allow a convenience store with fuel sales in a C-2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at the corner of T.R. Hughes Boulevard and East Terra Lane, south of Public Works Drive, within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Questions? Cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7784 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7245.
7245. Thank you, Bess. Brings the Bill 7785. Motion for second reading?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Impose. Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7785, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the rezoning of a certain tract of land located at 835 West Terra Lane, owned by For the Future LLC, from R-1 Single Family Residential District, excuse me, to C-2 General Business District.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7785 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7246.
7246. Thank you, Bess. Brings the Bill 7786. Motion for second reading?
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Impose. Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7786, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Myland Bush Auto Source to allow automobile and other motor vehicles, retail, new and used, in a C-2 general business district, under certain conditions, on a certain tract of land located at 835 and 839 West Terra Lane, within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you, sir. Most final passage?
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? Cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7786 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7247.
7247. Thank you, Bess. Brings the Bill 7788. Motion for second reading?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Impose. Mr. O'Keefe.
An ordinance, Bill Number 7788, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance renaming the existing Public Works Drive to Industry Drive and reassigning the name Public Works Drive to a new roadway in the city of O'Fallon.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
If this passes, you have to go back and redo all the ordinances that had Public Works Drive in it, huh?
Yes.
No. Eight yes, zero no. Bill 7788 passed, becomes ordinance number?
Seven two four eight.
Seven two forty-eight. Thank you, Bess. Questions or comments on the committee and commission reports? Seeing none. No consent calendar. Brings to the new business. Brings to Bill 7789. Motion for first reading?
Kuhn.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilman Kuhn, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7789, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of O'Fallon and the city of Darden Prairie, providing for maintenance of the Fize Road Path.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7790. Motion for first reading?
Kuhn.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Councilman Kuhn, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7790, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the cooperation agreement among the city of O'Fallon, the 1421 Mexico Road Community Improvement District, and Rosalitas Cantina Mexico Road Real Estate LLC, to extend the deadline for substantial completion of the development project as defined therein to July 31st, 2026.
I normally don't do this, but does anybody have any questions for Michael about Rosalitas? Mr. Wexler. Michael, come on up.
Yes, yeah. Hi.
Mr. Wexler.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. What is the setback, or what's causing it? You know, I wouldn't say it's any one cause. It's just in a development project kind of of this nature, you know, small delays, supply chain type problems can kind of compound on each other. And really, it's, you know, wanting to do a quality job with the Rosalitas, there's a lot of work that's going into it. And yeah, I mean, so, yeah.
Awesome. Yeah, the, I mean, the progress on the pictures looks great. I know we've just had a few questions about it from some of our constituents, so.
Of course, yeah, yeah. So next July is when the current project schedule is.
Cool. Thank you.
Mr. Kuhn.
That's all I was going to add as well, is several constituents have talked to me, and they're, they're quite excited for Rosalitas to come to O'Fallon, as am I, so hopefully July 31st, the only extension you need.
Yes, absolutely, so.
Anybody else? Amanda?
I just couldn't hear. Did you say it was supply chain problems?
Yeah, I mean, so there's been, you know, with, you know, sort of the different, where things are sourced from, you know, it's been not, you know, I don't want to speak on too detailed, but, you know, really, there's a number of things that go into a project of this nature, and, you know, kind, the deadline for substantial completion under the original cooperation agreement was, you know, made two years ago when this was being negotiated, and so just, you know, reality has kind of made it a little longer, so.
Plus, they're doing a lot of work on the inside. A lot of work on the inside. Okay, anybody else? Michael, thank you, sir.
Of course. Thank you.
Questions or comments on Resolution 925, 2025a? Motion second to introduce?
Kuhn.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 925, 2025a, a resolution authorizing an agreement with CDG Engineers Incorporated, providing for design of the Highway End Shared Use Path Project in an amount not to exceed
Motion second to approve?
Kuhn.
Motion by Councilman Kuhn, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilmembers, cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution A has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution B? I have one. I told Mr. Snowden I wouldn't ask, but I'm going to do it anyway. Can you explain to me why the security cameras for the new Public Works Building for the $31,000 was not in the original bid?
Sure. So, so the city went through a procurement process to select a preferred vendor to do all the cameras and security citywide in all the facilities. IT had gone through that process, so we are using that vendor for the new building to keep everything consistent, and the, the money for this is coming out of the project. It's just a separate contract with the preferred vendor.
Okay. I was just curious of why it was not in the original bid.
Yeah.
So, good. Any other questions? Motion second to introduce?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 925, 2025B, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Riverside Technologies Incorporated, providing for security cameras for the new Public Works and Fleet Maintenance Facility in an amount not to exceed $31,776.13.
Thank you. Motion second to approve?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution B has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution C? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Boyer.
Second by Councilman Boyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 925, 2025C, a resolution approving the strategic plan for the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, and authorizing the city administrator to implement such plan.
Thank you. Motion second to approve?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Boyer.
Second by Councilman Boyer. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution C has been approved. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to especially thank the council and all the staff that helped put the strategic plan together. I think this was a very smooth process, and I applaud all of you for your hard work on that, so we'll get to work on this immediately.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments on Resolution D, as in David? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 925, 2025D, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Lockmiller Group, providing for federal funding application assistance in an amount not to exceed $38,433.75.
Thank you. Motion second to approve?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution D has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution E? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.